We'd like to call the regular meeting to order. If you're able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. The first item on the agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to thank all of you that work for the township. It's got to be one heck of a job. But I want to start off with a compliment for all you, especially our Sheriff's Department. The reason that I come to this meeting is because, for some of you that don't know, I live in Turtle Creek, West Willow. And we need more help out there. Brenda, as I spoke with you the other day, that long wired road is still full of trash. The fence has been over. The couch is still laying there. And then on my street, there's still so many rental homes that look like hurricanes have went through the backyard where limbs are on the houses, on the carports. I walk my dog. It's hard walking down the sidewalk with little limbs that are broke. The unlevelness of the cement, and I think the streets cleaners are supposed to be starting soon. It's so nasty looking. And I have another comment, and I call ordinance, you know. From the time you enter gates, some of the homes you see are disgusting. And I call every year, and I call multiple times. It's ridiculous. And that's coming in the neighborhood off gates. The next one is Dorset. And I thought there was laws or rules that on a street you can only park the way of the traffic and on the curb, not on the curb. There's so many cars that park on the curb. Why doesn't the township or road commissioner, whoever, take those curbs out so that street's wider? It would clean the street up, clean the neighborhood up. And I contacted the road commission regarding where you come outdoors and you do the roundabout to head west. There's so much garbage and trees down in that one loop. And I don't understand why they ever allowed those trees to grow that close to the curbs anyway. They're, of course, from the storm, so many of them's broke. There's so much garbage, it's like, clean it up. Out on 23, going from 94 to Sam's Club, they have cleared the sides of the roads way back. They need to do that around that curb. It's only, you know, I have been brought up to be proactive. You do something before it turns into a major, major problem. That needs looked at. And I don't know who else to go to, who else to call. But Wood Glen needs cleaned up, the sidewalks need looked at. And then I have a question too. When, who puts in the new sidewalks? Is it the road commission?
I'm not sure where you're talking about.
Say, at the corner of Wood Glen and Tyler Road, because cones and crap has been there for weeks. And then when DTE comes through and does certain things, how long are they allowed to leave up those flags? Who's to clean that up? You know, the red flag, the blue flag, the yellow flag, even after the work is done? We have so many rentals on Wood Glen, I want it cleaned up.
Well, I did report again.
Yeah.
And I know Joanne McCollum, you've talked to her about it, and she sits on the road commission. There was another concern with residents on trees that are the road commissions, and I did get an email response today, and I think it will get to them, and we can get to them, was their response. So, we keep reporting them, that's what we keep doing, and that is a road right of way, and they're supposed to maintain it. Sidewalks were replaced by Nexus Pipeline, part of the DTE project.
Yeah. If somebody could even come do the walk I do to see how I about stumble, and I'm watching where I'm going. But we really need help out there. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
If you've got an arm you can pull. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Hearing none, we'll go to the consent agenda, which are the minutes of the April 4th work session and regular meeting, which were tabled at the April 18th meeting. So, we need a motion to remove from table.
So moved.
Support.
Motion Eldridge, support Hunter to remove. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we have improper form before the board.
So move the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion Rowe, support Eldridge to approve the consent agenda. Comment? I made some corrections and sent to Clerk Rowe for the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there any attorneys' report?
Madam Chair, just one update in regards to the Galt Village Shopping Center planned demolition. As you know, the township board has approved going, entering into a contract with Hamrich to demolish the facility or the vacant shopping center. Our project engineer, Mr. Jason Lafayette from SME, has been in contact with the Hamrich organization, and they are currently obtaining their bonds and their insurance certificates, and they'll be forwarding their first draft of the contract, his attention, probably this week even. He did issue, he being Jason Lafayette, did issue the notice to proceed, or letter to proceed, which triggers the 93-day period to complete the demolition on April 21st. So, that letter has gone out to Hamrich, making them aware of the award of the contract, as well as requesting that they provide an updated work schedule. That's imperative, because that updated work schedule is one that the board had indicated they would be sharing with all the residents of Galt Village, so that they are aware as to when the demolition is going to commence, when it's going to be under the, under the site control of Hamrich. So, that should be forthcoming as well. Hamrich has requested, and they will be given access, access inside the building on May 9th as part of their asbestos abatement planning protocol. So, that's already been scheduled with the building department, as well as the attorney for Galt Village has been notified. In regards to the issue of vermin, or rats, as I guess you prefer to call them, they did place 30 snap traps inside the building. The good news is that no rats were caught, because we don't think there are any rats inside the building. But they're going to leave those snap traps, it's hard to say.
You like.
They're going to leave the snap traps in place free of charge until the time in which the demolition actually begins. The man from Orkin did indicate that he thought that the bait traps had been set outside the Galt Village in the perimeter, had been, had shown evidence of mice, but that there's been no evidence of rats inside the building or outside the perimeter. So, can't speak for what may be happening over there in regards to the, what's the Miller drain work going on, and other things that may happen once the demolition begins. But as of right now, there is nothing to report in regards to what's going on inside the building from a vermin standpoint. So, just want to take a moment and update the board briefly, because the contract will be forthcoming, and I believe they will be more than ready to gain control of the site here in the next few weeks. And once they do, they will, the gates or the security fence will go up. In the meantime, we, I'll keep you apprised as to when we receive the updated schedule, so that the township board can issue that letter as previously indicated.
I'm just really concerned that we get the letter. I appreciate the update, but we really, we told residents we would notify them, so it's, I don't know, I don't understand the process, how the letter's going to get drafted, because I think it's got to be more than just a schedule. My concern is that work is going to start, or it's going to look like work is starting, and to be proactive, it would be better to do that ahead of time. So, I'm really concerned about making sure that residents know what's happening. The Galt Village Neighborhood Watch, a lot of the time was spent with DTE, but there was information shared about that, and they all that were in attendance were happy to hear that, but really getting that note out to the neighborhoods cannot be underestimated. So, I don't know who's going to draft it, or how it's going to get drafted, but I really would like to see it and know when it's happening, what the timeframe for that is. And even if it's got to be walked in the neighborhood, I'm willing to help with that, but I just really feel it's very important that that doesn't arrive one day, and stuff happens the next day.
Maybe I misspoke, or didn't frame it very well. The updated work schedule is going to be coming from Hamrich. Once we receive that, the intent is to actually include that schedule in a letter to the residents. And so, that letter, there's a number of people that can draft that letter, including Jason Lafayette, myself, other people that can, whoever wants to draft the letter is fine, but the intent is to have that work schedule attached to that letter, and so they can keep track as to what the plan's going to be during that time period. So, the work is not going to start until we get that updated work schedule, get the letter prepared, and how you deliver it, maybe by mail, by Facebook, by door-to-door delivery, whatever is the most effective way of doing that.
Yeah, I actually had a meeting with Jason, our Jason, from Planning Director, Ikey Angelo, and we discussed it. We're working on getting the envelopes ready with the stickers on them. So, once they have the meeting, the first meeting's going to be this week, I think, in the field with the abatement.
On May 9th, that'll be next week. They're going to go inside there to actually do the asbestos planning abatement.
So, once we, once we get that information, that triggers everything, and we're going to send the letter out. We'll have the envelopes prepared and ready, but until they have that meeting, you know, we really don't have any information yet to share. So, and it's supposed to have contact information in it for Jason from the planning department here, as well as a proposed schedule. And the fencing, I'm not sure when the fence is going to go up. So, there's going to be, we want the letter out before the fence goes up. That's the goal, and that's what the board had directed us to do. So, we're getting the envelopes ready, but the meeting has to happen first, and once that happens.
I don't, I don't understand why the meeting would have to happen first. The meeting is for planning for asbestos removal, so.
When their, their schedule.
Yeah, the schedule we need, but the letter is going to be more than the schedule. So, I just.
They're working on the letter, but we can't put when the, the project is officially starting, where they see the fence go up.
I know, I understand that, but the time started ticking, April 21st.
And they have 94 days from that date.
Yep. So, we're already several days into it, and that's my concern. Like, when we go out and we tell neighbors that we're here, no, that's not going to happen before, I just, that's my concern. Like, I want to be able to see the letter. I want to know that it's going out, because, you know, when I stand up in front of people and I tell them, no, that's not going to happen, my word is what I have to give to people.
We're going to do it.
And when we say it's going to be safe, and, like, people are willing to lean into that for us, but not if we don't deliver on what we say we were going to do. And so, I, I feel uncomfortable, because I don't know when that's going to be, but I was standing in the meeting in front of the neighbors saying, no, that's not going to happen.
And Jason is coming to the next Galt Village Neighborhood meeting as well, and that's going to be the topic, like DTE was. But it would be, my goal is to have it out. Jason said that he did not want to do anything until they had that meeting on site. So, it's, our Jason. So, we'll have the envelopes ready and ready to go, and then get the letter, whatever he wants to put in there to add to. But we need more information. I don't want to put out wrong information either, so. We're going to do it. We're going to do it. I don't want people to be surprised by something.
It's great, but the, the whole neighborhood's not in a Neighborhood Watch meeting, so it's so important for it to be in those houses, because what I hear from people is they want to trust us, and in order to trust us, we, they got to deliver on that. This is a big thing. If your house abuts that, and it's going to happen, I can empathize with that, but I, I think things could start drafting before that schedule. We can't do the schedule, we're relying on somebody else to do that, but I think a letter could be started, just so it isn't, we're waiting at the last minute, because it's been the last meeting, it's about a few weeks when we said we were going to do it. So, I just feel really strongly, I hear that super, I appreciate that that's going to happen, but I don't want to be in a position where something didn't happen, and it didn't happen, and the fences get put up, because this is our, that's our word. We've been telling people, that's our word, and so I, it means a lot.
I hear you. It's going to happen.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just, I want to speak to something that Attorney Winter said a little while ago, which is just the snap traps, I think was the verbiage. We had so many folks here a couple of weeks back that made such, they complained about, they were very upset about this, you know, seeing rats, and I, I tended to believe what they were saying. I would just ask that while they do intend to keep the traps in place, would they just be sure to do a concentrated, you know, sweep of the alley area or the shared, the shared area that they might interact with? And could we just ask that they put traps in that area and concentrate there, just to be on the safe side, if they're not already doing that, which they might be? They may already be doing that, but can we ask the question?
That's where they're at, right? I saw them.
The snap traps are inside, are inside Galt Village.
There's bait traps all around the perimeter outside of Galt Village. That's where there's been some noticeable chewing or gnawing of the bait by what appears to be field mice. So, the snap traps will remain, the bait traps will be, remain and filled accordingly until such time as it's demolished. I, I think the concern is going to be during the demolition, what could happen, and that's why I think, again, maybe the letter could go. Also, I have a number to call, because whether or not there's any movement that occurs that causes rats to come out of the sewers, wherever they come out of over there, when there's movement on the ground, where there's a disturbance on the ground, that's a possibility. So, I don't want, but right now, the real-time information is what I just said, that there is no evidence of any rats inside the building. Outside, there's been some mice detected, and I do think there's other factors over there that could be playing a role, being the Miller drain work. And also, again, I think we've also reminded people many times to try and eliminate any harborage of areas that can be used for rent boroughs, as well as food source. So, there is, there is no food source inside of the Galt Village, it's totally empty. But it could be some parts that still need more attention.
Thank you.
Under new business number one, we have the request to approve the Human Rights and Practice Attorney Kida J. Cohen for diversity, equity, and inclusion training and program development in an amount of $12,500, which is budgeted.
Support Peterson.
Motion Rowe, support Peterson.
Comments? I know, I'll just go over. This is a request to enter into an agreement to provide diversity, equity, and inclusion training and program development. And we are asking for this, and it's going to help with immediately updating some of the policies and procedures in the Human Resources Department, and it will develop and implement DEI training platform, and assist the township with grant opportunities, connecting resources, and employee training. So, we look forward to this, and if there's any questions, Mrs. Cohen is here. She gave a presentation at the work session, so does anyone have any further questions or comment?
Just that we heard that it would include a strategic plan focusing on thriving, that's an additional item that was listed, the list that you have there.
So, the, we'll be able to complete the framework. So, we'll be able to identify the sort of strategic goals, and I think an initial set of strategies. But the plan itself will be large, and it will take some time to really think through, gather, the community find out, you know, in what direction other people see this idea of public health and thriving, you know, how we can, there are many ways to, I think, to pursue it. And it will be interesting to see which ones people are really able and willing to put energy behind.
So, it's going to complete thorough review of the policies that was spoken of earlier regarding HR policies, draft a survey to baseline employee knowledge and concerns, design DEI training content, draft a framework for the strategic plan to thrive, develop DEI goals as one section of the strategic plan, provide feedback and assistance on implementation of the plan, and conduct three DEI leadership training sessions for 15 to 20 managers, and meet, meet with each manager after every session for questions and concerns. And anything above that is at an hourly rate.
Yes.
We have a motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is Welcome. It's a request to approve the 2023-2024 contract with Washau Community College for building use at the community center.
So moved.
Support.
Motion Swanson, support Hunter to approve the contract with Washau Community College. And this is a growing program that we have had for years in Ypsilanti Township at our community center. It's for GED classes and ESL, which is English as a second language. So, we're excited to have it grow and grow in Ypsilanti Township. We have a motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three is request to approve the invoice with Belfour Property Restoration in the amount of $21,492 for water damage mitigation at the community center and Green Oaks Golf Course, budgeted in line item 213-901-966-018.
Support Peterson.
Motion Peterson?
Support.
Support Eldridge? Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four is request to approve the addendum to the Looking Good Lawns LLC contract for highway and street cleanup and township mowing and abatement services.
So moved.
Motion Rowe?
Go ahead, no, let John have the honor.
Support Newman?
Yes.
Discussion.
We talked in the work session about getting more clarity. So, Attorney Winters, is there a friendly amendment or something we need here with this motion?
I think the clarity kind of centers around ensuring they were getting services, and that I think can be done by providing, providing a detailed invoice that comports what's set forth in this contract. So, I think that what I heard Grove said is that we do have an invoice, but that it can be beefed up, so to speak, to make sure that it actually, that we're getting what we're paying for in this contract. So, as long as the invoice is submitted for review and approval to show that the 315-hour is based upon six workers, working the hours, I think we'll be okay. It's a long addendum. That was a long addendum, wasn't it?
Yeah. So, you feel like we can pass this motion and still meet that criteria?
I think if you're making an amendment that they have the invoice revised to ensure that it's going to contain and comport with what is set forth in this contract, and have that reviewed by myself, then I would feel comfortable doing that.
So, that would be a friendly amendment? Can it be made that way, or is that acceptable?
Yes. I just want to, so Doug, you're going to need to review the amendment again?
I think I need to review the invoice, so that we have maybe a sample invoice that would, I'm not sure what invoices you currently are using.
Like, do you want to, would you want to draft an invoice, or, I don't, I just want to make sure I know what my next step is.
I can draft an invoice. I can draft one.
Or do you want to just see what he sends in now?
Well, I can see what he sends in, then I can modify it if needed, which I think it will be.
Okay.
So, yeah. In the packet, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, you go ahead.
In the packet, it was amended to say six workers. So, and your suggestion is that that just be reflected on the invoice that's submitted monthly, correct?
That there's a, there's a, there's a matching, 315 an hour is based upon six workers. What happens if you have four workers, it's still 350. That's where I think some of the concern is lying, is making sure that if there is a shortage of work, is there a credit carried over to the next month? I don't know without seeing that invoice, but I think it's what, I think we're all seeing the same thing in a different way.
So, I know the invoices they send for the different services. Just hearing the conversation, maybe it's kind of modifying the invoice to do for this type to just match up with that, just to kind of specify maybe locations, what staff worked, and the amount of time worked. So, do that, then send you a copy with the, along with the pictures they send?
Well, if I can see it beforehand, that'd probably be better, just to see what kind of template they're going to be using.
Correct, yeah. Template from maybe what they submitted for April, before they submit anything for May?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we'll send you an invoice, Doug, and then you'll provide us direction on what to change? Got it?
I understand.
I just want to make sure I'm, you know, following what the board wants.
So, we have a motion of support to approve with a friendly amendment, that we make sure the invoice includes the six employees and that our attorney reviews it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number five is request to approve the agreement with Spicer Group for professional services for the Apple Ridge Park improvements in the amount of $85,700, which is budgeted.
So move Peterson.
Motion Peterson, support Swanson to approve the agreement with Spicer Group to start on the professional services for the Apple Ridge Park improvements. Any questions are coming? This is going to be a great renovation of this park. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, motion carries. Number six is budget amendment, number six, Clerk Row?
All right, I have a motion to amend the 2023 budget, budget amendment number six, move to increase the general fund budget by $3,538 to $13,748,448, and improve the line item changes outlined, move to increase bike sidewalk rec and road funds by $857,842 to $4,286,303, and improve the line item changes as outlined, move to increase the law enforcement fund budget by $33,924 to $8,948,614, and improve the line item changes as outlined, and move to increase the motor pool fund budget by $25,437 to $592,018, and improve the line item changes as outlined, I'd so move the budget amendment.
Motion by Row, support, support by Swanson, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There's no other. I'm sorry, there's no other a business before the board, any comments?
So, I just wanted to recognize David Bowman, who serves on the watershed, or the Huron River Watershed Council, we both attended the meeting last month, and there was a report about PFAS in the water system, and then I didn't know if you wanted to add anything, Mr. Bowman?
Uh, there was a story on the CBS News tonight also about PFAS and some of the work that EPA is doing, so it's very much.
Microphone.
Ms. Kaiser is gonna get you a microphone.
This is for our record.
I was just saying that there's a.
Is that, huh? It'd be green.
Uh, there was a story on the CBS News this evening about some of the EPA regulations about PFAS.
Is voice activated, it might not be able to get through.
Fourth time's a charm.
Right.
Still the same, same lines, uh, they're just talking about.
Use of biosolids on farmland, and some of the problems they're finding with that.
And they do a lot of that in Washaw County, 'cause Ann Arbor doesn't incinerate, they land apply, right, and then they truck, I think.
Okay. I know they've had some problems up in Brighton with that as well.
They put it on farmers' fields, is. Thank you for your service on that, we appreciate.
And it was an interesting presentation, so maybe at a work session, if we wanted to have them come, maybe they could do that presentation for us, 'cause it's interesting information, it does impact our watershed in Ford Lake, so, um, there was some concerning information they shared about some of the research they were doing on fish, and so they also mentioned that they do a lot of outreach, um, as you go around our community, you can see there are a lot of people who fish, and, um, we do, there's a do not eat order on the, the fish that are caught in the Huron River and Ford Lake, and so they do have interpreters who go around, and they will go and talk and meet with people who speak several different languages, so that they can let them know about the do not eat order, but it would be an interesting, so if we have a light work session sometime, we might wanna reach out to them and see if they could come and do that presentation for us.
Okay, any other updates from the board? We went to the Peace Neighborhood, or it's not Peace Neighborhood, Peace, um.
Rally.
It's a community center. Yeah, pastor crowd and.
Rally, was it a rally?
Well, we, it was this past Saturday, and it was in West Willow at that church, and Glenn was there, and anyways, it was a wonderful attendance and vision for that land in the West Willow neighborhood, for a community center and a resource center, a health center, education center, everything that they, we really need in the neighborhood to help everyone thrive. It was a great event that we attended, and so I very much appreciate that. Ms. Kaiser, did you have a comment?
Yes, about all these chemicals and that kind of stuff, and with my understanding the algae in Ford Lake, what about on River Street by the Ford plant, what used to be the old Ford plant, where they have this, what I call is a dump for, and I, I'm assuming that city, but still, all of the bags of leaves and grass clippings and stuff that sits there when it rains.
Yep.
The river is right there, and where does it go? Into Ford Lake. My question is, is that envi, environmentally safe? I mean, doesn't, is there anybody that has control over that, or should there be?
There's, it's right up against the Huron River.
Correct.
And it goes right down, and, um, my understanding is that leaves create, is one of the ingredients for algae bloom, so that is definitely an impact. I re, I have reported that previously to, and this goes to the health of the community, really, and our environment, but Sierra Club, we just, when I discussed it a couple of years ago, they're, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm shocked that they're allowed to be that close to the river, and it's just a big compost.
Right, how many tons of yard waste is there with grass clippings that have chemicals on them, and I don't know how many chemicals are on the leaves, but grass, you know, so many people.
Aspiras, yeah.
That are that conscientious of bagging them are going to use chemicals, so how, what concentration are, of chemicals are there that are going to destroy Ford Lake?
It's right on the Huron River, so maybe you can just, that's a good discussion, yeah, we can just, just.
Well, the thing of it is, it's on Ford Lake, but it also, Ford Lake goes farther into Belleville Lake and.
Keeps, yeah.
Right, so how far, above, well, Peninsula Paper Company, do you remember when sometimes the water was red, sometimes it was green, that came down the, you know, from the printing?
Yeah.
So, which was more chemicals in to our system, but you could see it down the river, so.
That's a good, that's a good point, and I, I think maybe we should write a letter from the three full-time officials about some of these issues with the road commission, because I send emails, other people send emails, and we really don't get any responses, and it's clearly a road commission, you know, responsibility to clean up, and I, maybe if we sent a letter from the three of us and just say it's been brought up at the board, it comes up on Neighborhood Watch, and just, they, you know, I, I suggest that they hire a contractor, and, because they said they don't know when they'll get to the tree limbs that are down.
My question is, if you send a letter, registered return receipt to these people so that you know that they've got it, they can say, I didn't get it, well, you have, somebody has signed for it, so it has to be passed on, to make someone accountable for it.
Yeah, I agree. Speaking of accountability, we did have a meeting with Greg Dill, with the three full-time officials on, um, the information that's really needed for the PSU contract, and we expressed our dissatisfaction with the amount of information that we've received for your committee thus far, and we also talked about the Supreme Felon Grant for 1.2 million, which part of it was to do dispatch and police services and, for, not police services, what'd they call it?
Patrol.
Huh?
Patrol.
Patrol, okay, dispatch and patrol, in 48197 and 48198, we expressed that we did not want that to occur in Ypsilanti Township, we want our police officers to do the dispatch and patrol in our community, and Greg Dill said he would follow up with a letter to us by today, we don't have it yet, but we did share the board's concerns and all of our concerns with that, and he said he heard us, but we have not had a response yet, so when we get one, we'll let you guys know. We did follow up on a meeting, just, we don't have anything in writing yet from them. He wasn't exactly sure what dispatch and patrol meant, he mentioned Neighborhood Watch, and I said, that's a program that Ypsilanti Township coordinates in our community, so I'm not sure what Supreme Felons would have to do with that, and we made it clear, and he, he said he didn't know that. We're getting clarity on it, we don't have it yet, I'm sorry.
I appreciate, appreciate your follow, the follow-up from the three full-time officials on that concern, I guess my concern is a letter, we get a letter, what if the letter doesn't meet, um, what our concern is, like, what's our next step? I'm just, I'm not asking this to put anybody on the spot, but I'm just wondering, like, where do we go with this, because if we feel that, or if we, I guess we'd have to take a vote on that, I don't know that we took, we took out a vote on having any clarity, but at some point, can they have a contract like that where they're placing a service in the community where, as leadership, we're saying, or we've said, we're concerned about that, like, where does it go? 'Cause a letter may just say, yeah, it's gonna continue, like, when do we reach the point where it has to be more than a conversation on a letter?
I think we're close to there, um, we're trying to go through the channels, and I agree, if not, we'll have to bring it back to the board and, and do a, a resolution or motion of support, we're, but he really did not have a lot of information, I mean, Stan and Heather, you were there, I, I don't know if you feel the same way, but he, he said he heard us and understood us, and he, he did say that the city of Ypsilanti did want a lot of, of this patrol and dispatch, so I said, good, but we didn't get the letters of follow-up yet, so when we do, we'll let you, we'll let everyone know.
That's concerning in and of itself, like, if you need clarity, if you have to meet with someone to get clarity about something that's been written that's gonna be done, that's concerning, I mean, you'd think the clarity would come before anyone's dispatched.
Yeah. Agreed, and those are the questions we asked in the meeting too, and he's, he was gonna get more information on it, but when he said Neighborhood Watch, that was, you know, kind of a red flag, because we, the township actually administers that program, we have people who are employed here that oversee that program, and I'm not, they shouldn't use that word with Supreme Felon's patrolling, I don't know what that means, so, anyways, if we don't get it, I, we didn't get it yet, and it was right before the meeting, he said we'd have it, so maybe at the next meeting we should do something.
Madam Chair?
That's all I know, we're trying to follow up here.
Madam Chair, under other business, just like to say that I attended with some of the board members, the supervisor and the other trustee, the Brotherhood banquet, I believe it was the 70th banquet where the community has supported for many years, outstanding dinner, packed to the T, they have a new pastor, and they really appreciate seeing the faces of the township officials, so just wanna say outstanding evening.
Thank you, Gloria. All right, motion, support to adjourn?
So move.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 7:44. Thank you.
Ms.